Okay, because I didn't see the button. That's kind of cool. I'm gonna stand up. About an hour ago, I was, as you heard, in my pickleball uniform, and I've been sweating this day because it's been two years since we could play at the Huntsman Games again. And so I let them all know. I wasn't whining about it, but I was like, oh, boy. But we got eliminated in the fourth round, so it was kind of bittersweet. I had an hour to put my suit on. So first of all, I want to thank everybody here for running. You're gonna find that we all have very deep roots in this community. Myself, forty years plus, my lovely wife Carol, I've been married to for thirty-seven years. She's the best. We raised five daughters. It taught me how to listen very well, even though she says, please don't say you've manipulated my women all your life. Which is, whoops, slipped it out again. But I love our community. I have a background in retired builder, also in land acquisitions. We had a thermal energy company for a while. To some conservatives, solar is a nasty thing, but we did solar thermo, which is hot water. One of the few businesses being in hot water was a good thing. Thank you. Yeah, a little slow, but come on. Anyway, those five beautiful daughters have blessed me with many grandkids. Again, I have expertise. I've been, I think, a successful businessman. Actually started a business from our own college right here. Met some young college students years ago who invited me into a company. It was fun to see those young youthful minds go to work. Again, I have expertise. My dad was a commissioner way back in the eighties, when there was only twenty-six thousand in the whole county. In his campaign, he read four election signs that said, "We love you, Grandpa Aldrich," and all the grandkids signed it. I wished it was that easy in today's world. But the issues are important today. Again, I'm humbled to try to toot my own whistle, but I have martial arts. I carried a fourth-degree black belt, was forced to train with a lot of our law enforcement here. That's why I back 'em in the past. I've chaired the Red Rock Rotary. I've chaired our Dixie Sunshiners, the ambassador to the Chamber. I've also been a Chamber of Commerce president. I understand the power of small business. I'm also an advocate to the taxpayer. I know how important that is to you as citizens, and so I'm a watchdog for you in the county. I have fifteen seconds. We're all gonna say we love this community, and I'm one of them that does also. Thank you.
Vardell, your turn.
Andy, thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. I think this very first introduction perhaps may be as important as anything that you will hear tonight because this gives you an indication of who we are as individuals. And as individuals, it's our responsibility to represent you. So we will talk about issues that are relevant to the city of St. George, but I appreciate the opportunity to tell you a little bit about who I am as a person also. I moved to St. George in nineteen ninety. In fact, it was a job that brought me here. I was the very first general manager of the Red Cliffs Mall. And after about six years of doing that, I realized that this is now my home. And so between my wife Cindy and I, we raised our four children. And sadly, we have exported our greatest treasure, and that was our children. So tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about what we can do as a community to try and ensure that our children and our grandchildren and their children perhaps have an opportunity to be here with us. It was interesting for me, and I hope it's interesting for you also, as I actually sat down and tried to decide what my pedigree might be, what my qualifications might be to be a member of the St. George City Council, I realized that everything that I have done since I've been here was on-the-job training. I've had the opportunity, as many of you and many of the candidates have had, to serve in public service-related opportunities. I've served on, chaired the hospital's foundation. I've also served as a trustee on the hospital's governing board. I, along with other businessmen, was responsible for bringing the United Way Dixie to southern Utah. Up to that point, any funds that were contributed, whether it was UPS or Science Bank or whatever the organization was, all that money went north and it never filtered back down. We saw a need, we addressed that need. There are many other things. I was appointed by the county many years ago to serve on the Habitat Advisory Conservation Board. That was an interesting experience for me to become more versed, more well-rounded in terms of our habitat and the things that it means to our community. I'm grateful to be here tonight. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to share with you some of my ideas and concepts with relation to the St. George City Council. I've served off in the planning commission. I'm currently serving as an appointed member of the St. George City Council. And when we finish up tonight, I will ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie Larson. I'm a native of southern Utah. I'm gonna say this number quick. I've been arrested since nineteen sixty-seven, so do the math on that quick. I have lived all over the city of St. George. Of course, when we, our first family home was downtown St. George. I graduated from Dixie College and Dixie High School, then Dixie College. When my husband Milton Larson and I got married, we moved in the Dixie Downs area. From there, we moved back down to St. George proper, and then we moved out to the fields. I love every bit of St. George. Each part of St. George is beautiful and has its own personality. I didn't know I was marrying into work. When I married my husband, his family was original, owner-operators of Larson's Prostop. And we took that business on, and he became the data operations manager of that. We sold it in two thousand and two, and in the meantime, we developed other small businesses. I understand small business on a different level. I understand the hardships that business faces when they're new to the community and getting that foot in that door and making sure you meet all the regulations and zoning for that. I also have been involved in several PTA boards across the valley, not because we moved a lot, but because where we live, the ninety kids on my street got bused from Bloomington to the Riverside Elementary and back and forth several times. So I know a variety of people throughout that area, and it's been a great resource to this campaign. I think an important part is I'm on the State Door City Planning Commission right now, and I currently serve as vice chairman. As the public comes to those public hearings, so important to listen and hear what is going on in those neighborhoods. I try to drive to every neighborhood. I read all the material. I try to visit those neighborhoods twice. And sometimes I talk to community members. It's important as we look at neighborhoods and we look at what is going on there that we make the appropriate choices. I'm also serving on the steering committee for the general plan, which is the plan for the next twenty years. That takes it one step deeper as we look at downtown, your individual neighborhood, traffic, water, and all of those things. And I'm excited about that. I'm excited about how deep we have dug into that. And I hope you can support me in my campaign.
All right. It's kind of weird being up here in the spotlight. I am Michelle Tanner. Thank you for hosting this. I think this is really exciting to be a part of the first debate here. This is awesome. And I want to congratulate all of you for being here. I wish that every single seat in this place was filled. If we've learned anything over this last eighteen months, it is that local government, local community involvement is vital. There's so much going on at the federal level right now, the national level, but really where the ultimate power in our day-to-day lives, it's here at the local level. And that's honestly why I'm here, putting myself out there, doing this. I'm not your most likely candidate to run for this position. I'm actually a board-certified family nurse practitioner. I grew up here in St. George, and so I absolutely love this area. I'm raising my children in this area because I truly believe we live in the greatest city in the greatest nation in the world. And I really want to keep it that way. I have worked in emergency medicine for the last decade. I still work part-time there over the last year. And I also run a small business. I own a small medical clinic here in town for the last three years. So I do bring some of that experience to the table. But really, what's gotten me involved, I have never aspired to be in a position such as this, but above all, I am a mother. And I feel that my children's liberties and futures have been threatened. And this last eighteen months has been a huge wake-up call to that. And I like to follow the eleventh commandment, which is thou shalt not whine, and get out there and do something about it. And so over this last year, I have really put myself, my career, my family's livelihood on the line to speak truth. As you can imagine, as a medical professional, it has not been popular to speak out publicly against mandates. And again, I'm not anti-mask, anti-vaccine, none of that. I am anti-mandate. And I adamantly oppose usurpation of power by the government. And what I wish we would have saw, seen over this last year, is a stronger presence. Silence in the face of tyranny is dangerous. And we need people at the local level willing to stand up because we have not seen the end of these mandates and say, no, not in my town. So that's why I'm here. I appreciate all of you guys being here. I know some people say liberty is not a local issue, but it absolutely is. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the question portion of the meeting. We'll last approximately another thirty-five minutes or so. We want to stress that you have two minutes to answer the question. If one of the other candidates wants to rebut something that you said, they will raise their hand. They will have one minute of rebuttal if it comes to that. It's not necessary to, it is a debate, but it's not necessary to rebut anybody's answer. We'll start with, this is for Greg and Vardell. You'll each have two minutes to respond to this. Question number one. Water, water, water. Candidate, please quickly outline the best and worst-case scenarios pertaining to water in the city of St. George. Greg, you wanna go first?
Well, we've seen what's happened because of who's back in DC shutting our Lake Powell pipeline down. Now, when we talk about what's gonna happen, Utah has the rights there, and I agree with you a hundred percent. We have the rights there. But Lake Mead's down thirty-six percent. So reality is, right now, we can't touch that. On a positive note, we have the Tocqueville reservoir. We're reclaiming more water. Warner Valley's gonna happen as soon as we get through the school trust lands and make that work. There's a lot of water out in the fields, and we hear a lot that, oh, that's so expensive to process and make drinkable. But I'm sure as you as a people, if water is liquid gold in the desert, we'll spend and ask you to participate in getting that water to drinkable standards. Sand Hollow's doing well, the Aquifers, but even as Adam Lenhart has said, our city manager, water will dictate our growth. I don't expect you to buy a home here or have a friend that says, oh, by the way, you're gonna be water-restricted and rolling power outages. These are things that have become self-inflicting to me. So water's important to us. It is the number-one issue for most of us, right up there with public safety. Yes, we've conserved, but as a city, are we conserving so the city can profit more through permits? I'm not against growth, believe me, but five to six percent is much healthier than this eighteen percent-plus that's happening right now. So it's hard to say between personal growth. Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, that's what I believe. I have fifteen seconds. I love to shower with my wife and conserve. Thank you.
Vardell, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got the question. In fact, it's a question that's fairly common. Prior to Zach Renshaw being the Water Conservancy District Chairman, we were led for a number of years by a gentleman by the name of Ron Thompson. And Ron made a statement one time that has stuck with me forever, and he said this. He said, "If we have water, we have lots of problems. But if we don't have water, we only have one problem." And when you think about that, that is so true. I personally, I support the Lake Powell pipeline. My confidence in that ever happening or happening soon is dwindling each and every day. Let me just share one thing about the Lake Powell pipeline and Lake Powell. We may have a concern more than the water. That is a hydroelectric dam. And at some point, if that water gets below those generator capabilities, you think that the people north and south of us are unhappy about not having water? Wait till they don't have water in the dark. So for me personally, Lake Powell pipeline, I support it. It's not the only answer. Storage is our answer. The city of St. George right now maintains seven-hundred-and-fifty-five miles of culinary water pipeline. We have twenty-one storage tanks that have a fifty-nine-million-gallon capacity. We deliver eight-point-one-billion gallons of water a year. We treat ten-point-five-million gallons of sewage per day. Ladies and gentlemen, our future is in our ability to not only conserve, but to better use our reuse water. You will see, as we go forward, opportunities with the reservoirs, as Greg has suggested, and others, that we will be able to store water, which is our future.
All right, thank you, Vardell.
Thank you, Vardell. I just want to let you know as citizens, the Virgin River is our main resource. And because of that little minnow, which has been an issue, we have to pump water back into the Virgin River because of that. So just think about that. See if there's ways that we could maybe build a place for that minnow to live happily ever after.
Vardell? I would just add to that. Our water treatment plant, that is where that water comes back into the Virgin River. By federal mandate, we have to do that for that very reason. But we put water that's cleaner back into the Virgin River than is already in the Virgin River. And that's why you're gonna see the graveyard wash reservoir, where we're gonna take that water that we've been sending down the Virgin River and put it back into storage.
Okay, this question is for Natalie and Michelle. We will revisit water in a minute, but right now, let's talk about growth. This is America, and I'll do what I want with my land, is the popular mantra here in the West. Is that a legitimate statement? Why or why not? Natalie?
That is a legitimate question. But we have to realize that we're living in a incorporated city, and there are laws and ordinance that keeps the city safe for all of us and in good neighborly fashion. I'm on the planning commission. I just returned from northern Utah for this. And the vision that was set for this community when it was laid out was on the grid system. And as we have evolved, we've seen things change. We've seen Bloomington Hills come in and no sidewalks or streetlights and some things like that. Something that has come up frequently lately is the vacation rentals and in neighborhoods. And people say, well, it's my home. I have the right to put a vacation rental right next door. It's my property. I should be able to rent it to who I want. And we find in some neighborhoods that there's a party going on until two o'clock in the morning. There's cars parked illegally on front lawns. So you do have to say your rights and that your property line, the city has to put things in order for public safety and welfare of those around them. And it comes down to traffic, policing, and all those other things.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. Michelle, would you like to repeat the question? Okay, the question is, this is America, and I'll do what I want with my land, is the popular mantra here in the West. Is that a legitimate statement? Why or why not?
Amen. Yeah, I do think that is a legitimate statement. I am all about the proper role of government. Just to be totally candid about my ideology, if any of you are familiar with The Proper Rule of Government by Ezra Taft Benson way back in the nineteen sixties, I align very well with that ideology, which describes government as being to protect the life, liberty, and property of its citizens. Now, with that said, of course, we do live in a city. And, you know, if something is zoned for a residential, we don't necessarily want a big, you know, recycling plant or whatever going right next door. So there are some things when you live in a city that you do abide by, of course. But I think we really need to be cognizant of running everything through what is actually the proper role of government. And, you know, I'm all for people being able to do what they want as far as when it comes to vacation rentals. If you want to build a casita on your property, I believe that's your property and your right to do so. Unfortunately, whether it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental, you always run the risk of having, quote, "bad neighbors." But I do feel in general, that especially here as a community, we really do try to be good neighbors to one another. And that's really where I think we need to be thinking about these things, is what is the proper role of government?
Okay, this is for Greg and for Natalie. All candidates have agreed that Dixie State is making a mistake attempting to drop the Dixie name from its university. But what specifically are you willing to do, let's see, lost my click, to help prevent the change? Well, it's you and Natalie. Natalie, go ahead. Go ahead, Natalie.
Thanks, Andy. I'd never get to the first. First, I love Dixie. My dad was athletic director here at Dixie State College, well, I used to say Dixie Junior College at that point. I spent a lot of time in that old gym as a little girl, and it broke my heart when they tore it down. My home sits, my family home sits right behind the Dixie Sugarloaf. I've written legislators up north trying to keep Dixie State, Dixie State. I also feel as a community, we owe it just responsibility to do that as citizens. That's where we speak most loud. And believe it or not, planning commission, every one of those letters that comes in, I read. So if you're concerned about keeping Dixie State, Dixie State, you should write those letters to those northern Utah officials who believe it should change. I don't know that we can stop it from happening because it will go to legislature.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. Greg?
Okay, as a Dixie sunshiner, now we're called sunshiners, I think the university saw this a while back ago. So they started taking Dixie out where they can. You've seen my sons. I'm here about protecting our heritage, our Dixie heritage. And as a national coach from the past, I dealt with every ethnic group in the country. There's no racism here. And if there is, we'll gather our wagons and protect whoever's been wrong, and we'll make it right. There is no shame in this name. I repeat that. There is no shame in this name. Thank you. And because we're now a Division One school, and there is, and I only speculate on this, there's a big donor coming in, millions of dollars, trying to dictate to us how to rebrand and name this school. I encourage you to call your legislator. Let him know that we're okay. Attendance is setting records. So that doesn't work. You hear all the arguments. I just wish that the president of this university would debate Tim Anderson, who's put his heart into this. He's a well-recognized attorney, and he is really fighting for our cause. Because once that happens, you've seen it across the country, what's coming next? Critical race theory, all this other. We come from a big heritage of pioneers. Don't apologize for that. Don't apologize for any ethnic background you have. Quit being Chinese-American, Hispanic, Afro. Let's be Americans. That's what we need to be. Thank you.
I'd just like to follow up with that. Stick to the facts when you write your legislators. Tell them what this university has done for your community, for your children, for yourself personally, the things you have given up personally, the ways you've contributed, the stories that have happened at this university. Don't get into the semantics of the national news and all this other stuff. This is a community college who serves this region, and they need to know that. They need to respect that in northern Utah. And so I feel like if we're clear on what we say, it's so important and not get into these other issues.
Okay, this next question is for Vardell and Michelle. Unlike Washington DC, we have to balance a budget and stay within it here locally. What is your personal top priority in spending for the city? Michelle, you wanna go first?
Sure. So I think government 101 is public safety. It comes back to that proper rule of government, right? To protect life, liberty, and property. And if our tax dollars are gonna go to anything, it's going to be going to our law enforcement to protect our community. Unfortunately, what we're seeing right now, we still live in, obviously, an amazing community, and I back our law enforcement a hundred percent. But what we're seeing right now is a lot of growth. With that comes increased crime. I can tell you from personal experiences from doing medical clearances in the emergency department as well as, you know, other personal experiences, that we have criminals right now who normally would be arrested and go to jail that are being, you know, let off on citations because the jail is basically dictating who they will and won't take there because of COVID restrictions, because of staffing issues. I'm told we're around a dozen officers short right now in St. George City. This is a big issue. I want to make sure this community is safe for my children. That is number-one priority of our government.
No, I got it. Thank you. I would echo what we just suggested on public safety. You know, there are so many other issues. Traffic is a concern for me always. But I will tell you this. If I'm in a light for two minutes or three minutes, I'm annoyed. But I'll tell you when I'm really annoyed. If I'm in a crisis situation and I call 911 and I don't know that somebody's coming. So that public safety for me is a huge, huge issue. But it doesn't end right there. St. George City is a business. Ladies and gentlemen, I will tell you that we have things, we are the largest municipal power supplier in the state of Utah. We have an airport. We have Suntran. Equally concerning to me is we have infrastructure that's aging in place. So there's so many things that the budget dollars are in competition for. I would absolutely echo public safety first and foremost for me, but then infrastructure. So that we know that our roads, our traffic, growth is coming. And we didn't get a chance to participate in the growth conversation. People are coming here. We came here. We love it here. People will continue to come here. Our job is to be ready for them when they get here. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak to, our gentleman mentioned power. We have two mega gas turbines over down by Costco and just used for peak power purposes. I just want our citizens to know that our main transmission lines come from up north. And those who've been here maybe more than ten years, we had a fire up there, and I mean, everything shut down. And so that's an issue. I'd like to see us add another turbine and become independent. Spend your tax dollars for that so we have the energy in case there's a northern crisis again. There was only one gas station that could pump gas on Bluff Street, and the Cottens owned it. You should have seen the lines. But, you know, we get so used to flicking the switch or looking at our devices. I mean, it shut internet and everything down. So that's something that I would invest in in the future, is our power grids. Thank you.
All right, Vardell?
There are, it's true, there is one transmission line that comes down from the north. But there are five separate lines in that transmission corridor. And Rocky Mountain Power is considering putting a sixth line in. So I think that we're fairly comfortable in knowing that some of the history we've learned from. I would also tell you those Mill Creek generators, they're combined, those two generators could power all of St. George in the winter. Those two alone have that capability. And then lastly, I would just tell you that our power grid is black fiber. I'd never heard of that before. I did a little research. Black fiber means our energy controls are completely separate from the city's internet system and the outside world. We're not gonna get hacked in that regard. Thank you.
Okay, this next question is for Greg and Michelle. The divisiveness and partisanship has become tense in modern America, even here in St. George at times. George at times. How can you help unite people during this difficult and stressful era? We'll start with Michelle.
Yeah, this is actually a really great question and a really huge issue that's going on right now. On kind of a personal note, I've had a lot of public speaking events over the course of this last year and every time I pray before one of those events and ask, what message do you want me to give? It is always unity. Unity is so important in our communities right now and one thing I've really tried to stress in my own life and my own sphere of influence is it doesn't matter if we think total opposite of one another, we can still love each other. That's what it ultimately comes down to is loving God, loving your neighbor. And I really do think we need to get away from this divisive rhetoric of if you don't do X, Y, and Z, then I'm not going to talk to you and you're not my friend anymore. It's outrageous and so I really made a conscious effort in my own life to reach out to people who I know think differently from me and let them know that it's okay that you think differently from me. We can still be friends and that's the beauty of America. That's why our American flag, I feel like that is the most important flag that should be flown everywhere because it is all encompassing. I don't care what religion you are, what race you are, what sexuality you are, it is all encompassing. We, I was talking to a friend in the bank the other day and he mentioned, he said, why is it that after events like 9/11, it takes these natural disasters and you know horrible things to happen to bring us together? Why can't we be like this every single day? And I thought that was a really amazing point. My time is up, but I hope we can be unified.
Love. I love that, Michelle. It is about love. Our Rotary Group puts an emphasis on youth. I think we impact our youth at a young, early age to help them and then as adults, you should all play pickleball and we'd all get along. Fortunately, when I used to teach martial arts, I've retired a lot, we try to emphasize on grades at school and discipline. We loved what we called the bully bashers and we're seeing more of that be gone in society. But what hurts most of us in divide this is that you have somebody here that takes their First Amendment rights and has an opinion and then the other person that has a different opinion and we almost feel like we're silenced. But we're awake, we know the important issues. It is about protecting our community. We've seen that hate across the country. We don't want that to come here. So I think unity is important. Everybody here doesn't think the same. If we did, they'd only need one of us. I borrowed that line by the way, but I always liked that concept. Again, I'll reflect back on raising five daughters. They sure taught me to listen well and they are so different and who says girls don't fight? They got that wrong. I say they could scrap with the best of them. But when I listen to them, I'd sometimes I'd say like, did you really just say that? Or why would you think that not only of me or somebody else? So the discussion, the dialogue of understanding, because everybody's needs are different. I love people when they don't have an agenda and we can just know that we're transparent. You can come talk to us about a subject, maybe we don't agree, but we'll listen and we'll keep it clean and we'll keep it safe. And if you want to duke it out, then do it in the ring, get paid to do it. It's always a good thing. Thank you. Thank you Greg.
Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
I was just going to mention one more thing about unity is I believe one thing we can all unify on because there are so many different opinions right now, of course, of you know, COVID and masks and vaccines. What we should be able to all unify on is liberty. If we all unify on liberty and individual freedom and choice, it doesn't matter the choice that your neighbor is making. So I hope that can be our unifying factor is liberty.
You know, I found a solution of having people come together in unity is working together and serving together. When people put their own personal interests aside, work together for a common good and sometimes this comes from nothing that maybe you're interested in, but you go pick up garbage with a neighbor, you go to a school function, not because you have a child in the school, but because the child needs red to, that you learn things from the community, you learn things when you listen to those people around you, you learn a different way of life maybe and a different perspective. My husband's a cattleman and I can tell you there's more than one way to sort cows. It's not always pretty, but at the end of the day, as a family and friends, we work together and we get the job completed. So service is a key to that.
You know, we talked about having something that brings us together and I think beyond party, being a nonpartisan race, child trafficking, can we all agree with that? You know, child slavery, see, those are the causes that bring us together and we stand together.
This is for Bardell and Natalie. The question is for more than 100 years agriculture was the biggest industry in St. George, then construction took over. Eventually growth will slow and a new industry will emerge. What will it be? Will it be technology, manufacturing, or tourism? Explain why, what you think it will be and why? Go ahead, sir.
Gosh, agriculture is near and dear to my heart. I've been associated with the Dixie Junior Livestock Show for 25 years. I'm actually the only woman who has served as president of that organization. We help 300 kids, sometimes a few more and a few less, every year to learn to care, love, and take care of an animal. So the agriculture going away is heartbreaking to me. As I look what's coming forward, I see technology as at the forefront. We like clean jobs here. We don't like a lot of pollution and so I do see Tech Ridge as coming forward. Many of our young people are already into that industry and a lot of young people and middle-aged people and even people my age are into that and they can work from home, they can work remotely. So they're able to work at home without a big carbon impact on our community as well and they have good paying jobs, which in turn hopefully the service industry will be able to benefit from that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I think that our future success is dependent on diversifying our economy. You may or may not know this, but the sales tax from tourism reduces your individual property taxes between $1,200 and $1,300 per household. So am I pro tourism? I absolutely am because they come, they spend their money, and hopefully they go home. Not always, but hopefully they go home and we get the value and the benefit if in no other way through reduced property taxes. I would echo what Natalie suggested about Tech Ridge. I think that is our future and for our next generation and the generation after them. And I look at my own grandchildren and I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but I can tell you right now, every single one of them can navigate an iPad if they've ever even seen it before. They have that ability and I think they have that expectation for the future. I love Tech Ridge. I really think it is our future. I like what we're doing up there right now. I think the challenge for us, and we're dealing with it, is transportation, getting up and down on Tech Ridge without making it so inconvenient for the neighbors and anybody else that's visiting up there. But Tech Ridge, the way it's master planned and the way it will be developed, will be our future. Now, I'm sad about the agricultural land too. I teach a class every third Friday and I ask the kids and the agents, the real estate agents in that class, I tell them a story about Washington Fields and I go, why do you think they call it Washington Fields? And they all look at me like a deer in the headlights. They don't realize that it used to be fields in Washington. Hopefully, we will not totally abandon that as part of our industry and our economy and our community. Thank you.
We are getting short on time. I have two questions that I want all four of you to answer, but if you would just take one minute each so we can get these last two questions in, I would appreciate it. Question number one, this one's near and dear to me because my kids have moved away, but when our kids leave, they can't afford to come back. What will you do as a council member to try and change that? We'll start with Greg and go right down the line.
Okay, I'll probably tee a lot of my developer friends off, but I had a couple ideas and it's not, nothing new to the world because we have these devices. All you got to do is Google in cities that have growing pains, et cetera, affordable housing, not obtainable, but affordable. So I would propose on new developments, first of all, I'm going to support local developers and that industry because that helps us. Not outside developers, if they want to come, because we're limited with water and resources. But if they come, I would implement and ask my other future councilmen to at least consider having them put 15% of their building lots, working with the city, to our service industry and for people, because if we don't have our service industry, we're really going to see trouble in the future. I guess I only had a minute on this one?
Yep.
Okay. So anyway, that's one of my ideas, an affordable year loan. I won't be around to see it, but it may make it affordable for them to stay.
Thank you Greg. Bardell?
I think we need to focus on the things that we can control. We have no control over building costs and materials and that supply chain backup is affecting everything, including building materials. Cost of labor, you know, when we had the crash back in 2007, a lot of our trades left the area and they never came back. If you're a builder or developer, you're struggling to find people to come to work and when they do come to work, they can ask just about any price they want. So what can we control? We can control design criteria. If it means a smaller lot to get prices in line, that's what we should be considering doing. If it means reducing the landscape on a required new construction, that's what we should be doing. If it's higher density in moderation, that's what we should be doing. Those are the things we can control. Those are how we help our kids and our grandkids come home.
Thank you Bardell.
I'm going to write Bardell's coattails on that and just echo what he says and then just explain a little bit further what's going on, but that's coming forward for the city. We have builders, developers come forward using multi-zoning, trying to do multi-zoning within a subdivision. You'll see one if you know the legacy, I don't know what you call it, Allen Dixie Drive, it's a care facility. That's going to have tiny homes in it as well as the more standard lot size, which will be more affordable. And then we've done some homes, I guess apartment buildings that are being looked at that are more than two stories. We also have to look at ways that we can help developers by not adding on to what they are building. Often we say, would you add this on? Would you add that on? Would you add this on for decoration? And I think sometimes we make that $10,000 or $15,000 more for the end user than it needed to be, which will make somebody out of a home.
Thank you Natalie. Michelle, one minute.
Free market, free market, free market. I think a lot of times we want to look to government to fix a lot of these issues. Unfortunately, when it comes to affordable housing, as a city, we're pretty limited on what we can actually do. As some of these guys mentioned, you know, we can't necessarily control the building costs and things like that. Now, I'm all for private builders seeing the need for more affordable houses and you know, building smaller structures, starter homes. We're not actually seeing a lot of starter homes going in anymore. I think that would be a great thing. I'm not against a variety, you know, high-density housing, which doesn't always equal affordable as some people are discovering with some of these new developments going in. So I think we really just need to look to the free market to handle this issue and be open to having smaller dwellings and allowing people to rent out their homes as well and have accessory dwellings.
All right, thank you Michelle. Okay, one last question again, I would ask that you keep your remarks on this question to one minute and then we will give you some closing, some time for some closing remarks. This is back to the Dixie name change. It's kind of a loaded question. Have fun with it. Is the city's relationship with the university more important than the name of the school? Explain why or why not? We'll start at that end now. Michelle, you get to go first.
You said, is the city's relationship more important than the name of the school?
More important than the name change. What is more important in your mind and why?
So yes, relationships are important and as a city, we're limited as far as we don't have control, right, over the university changing its name. With that said, I do think that we do need to be really bold when it comes to cancel culture, trying to inundate our community. Because if you give cancel culture an inch, it will take a mile. So thank you. I do believe we need to be firm in our stance on keeping Dixie and doing whatever we can as a city to be the voice for the people because every person I've talked to in this community is for keeping Dixie.
Yes, I will repeat the question. Is the city's relationship with the university more important than the name of the school? Explain why or why not?
It's interesting in St. George and Washington County, the school district and the University have locked hand in hand on a lot of great things. A lot of it's because the community support for those entities. It's unfortunate that we are at this moment in time where we see a division, a huge division in our community. If you look at the Atwood Center and what it's done for the local economy and for startup businesses, it really has been advantageous for St. George City. So the city cannot tell the university what to be named. I think it can take a stance, a position, which I believe they have done. It's going to come down to the state who decides that for us.
Okay, thank you. Bardell?
You know, I didn't like it. I think I shared earlier in my comments that I had the opportunity to serve on the Dixie Regional Medical Center Hospital Governing Board. It was disappointing to me when they changed the name, but if I'm sick, I'm still going to the hospital, right? So I choose not to be offended by the name Dixie and I think unfortunately, people choose what offends them and what does not offend them. The reality is the city of St. George has come out with a statement saying, we support anything named Dixie, including our efforts to get the Dixie Sugarloaf on the National Historic Register so that that will never be threatened by any entity ever. That's true with the D on the hill, which we don't own by the way, but we're coordinating with the university to be able to have some rights to that. I believe that everything has to be a coalition and I'm not in favor of burning that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you Bardell. Greg, you have one minute.
Actions speak louder words. I can't even fathom having a university in this town that discusses from a name change. I just can't see the reasoning behind that. So it is important. I'd like to see Dixie Boulevard go down 700. I'd like to see Dixie all over that. There is concerns about that D, but you know, the polls say that over 85% of us here support keeping it Dixie. Yes. How many are for Dixie? I'm just, let's take a poll. Yeah, yeah, let's beat that. And talks cheap and there's things that we can't do and we will get them done and we'll pivot around that D up on the hill, all the citizens together, because they're not taking that off the hill under my watch. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you Greg. Okay, we will each have 90 seconds now to summarize or maybe talk about one particular point you feel passionately about. We will start with Michelle. Excuse me, we'll start with Natalie and then Bardell and then Michelle and then Greg. Go ahead Natalie.
Thanks Andy. I love this community. I do see some challenges coming down the road as I drive the community. One thing that has concerned me is the lack of fire stations, particularly at Desert Canyon and the ledges. There's 1,400 rooftops out there right now, just in Desert Canyon. There is not a fire station out there. There's one at the airport, but they cannot leave the airport. We also have desert color out there. So the closest fire station we have is Sun River. So those are things that concern me. The traffic lanes being widened to meet roadways width and right where I live, there's no curb bed or sidewalk for children to walk to school. So that is something that is a concern to me, that we get community centers. What was great about St. George when I grew up, we have the Sun Bowl, Dixie Bowl, shave ice, all that stuff right there together. St. George is getting large enough that we need those community nodes, those little communities within the community, so people do not have to drive the roads, that they can go to their neighborhoods, that they get to know their neighbors, that we build strong neighborhoods. I think that is something that's lacking, is something that city council can be involved in and help develop these strong neighborhoods, which will help the police department. They started a new program that I Am St. George PD and we all need to be active in our community with that. I appreciate the support I have. I'm really happy that Greg and Brian and Bardell and even Tony tonight texted me and said she was supporting ministries and that means a lot along with my family and... And that means a lot, along with my family and friends.
That's Natalie Larson. Vardell Curtis.
You know, this has really been a great experience for me tonight. And I'm looking forward actually to when this wraps up and we're out in the hallway because I think that's where you will really have an opportunity to meet and visit. And we can talk about the things that are important to you. I can tell you what's important to me, and I think I've done that tonight. I would just leave you with this one thought. Experience matters. And I would like to believe in my heart, and I do believe this, that everything that I've done leading up to this point tonight has prepared me to serve on the St. George City Council. I would welcome you to come and visit with me about specific issues if you would like to. But ballots went out today from the county. You'll have the opportunity to mail in your ballot as early as this weekend. I would encourage you to please study the issues, study the candidates, vet each one of us. We may not, I may not check every box for you, and that's fine. What's most important is that you do vote. And I encourage you to do that. Grassroots, you know what? Turn the TV off. I think that's where a lot of our problems come, learning about federal issues and the sad state of affairs of our country. Let's fix it locally. I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Michelle, you're up.
All right, I just want to thank you all again for coming and again stress how vital it is now more than ever that we are involved in our local communities. Get your neighbors involved. Make sure they are voting. I think some people still don't realize the pivotal point we are at in this nation right now. And if we don't band together as local communities, we are in trouble. I do have hope, though. I do want to relay that message of hope. I do feel, I call it the spirit of liberty. I feel like people are waking up to that and how important it is right now to make a stand and band together. And I really just want to echo how important that is. And thank you, guys, all for being here. My track record has shown over this last year that I will place principle over popularity, even when it's not popular. That proper role of government is key. And really understanding that and having local leadership and representation who understand that as well. So please come talk to me out there. I love to hear the things that are important to you as well. And I thank you all again for coming.
Now, Greg, Vardell, you have 90 seconds.
Okay, it's good to be last. My mother was a nurse. I have a special piece of my heart for Michelle. Love what she stands for. And she was the inspiration for me to run. She made a point that we were active in our community. Can't wait to meet you out at the table. Come visit with me. I try to be humble on all the things and where I have been active. But Mom set an example about our senior center in St. George. It was a little old house years ago and a little shed on it. Together, the community came together, and we got that senior center built. And they dedicated and named my mother after that. So I'm running for her. And I appreciate everything that she has taught me to do. I'm here to fight for you. I'm here to address the growth issues, the water, the traffic. We have experiences in there, and I look forward to visiting you. I'd like to say if you can't come to the table, you can visit my website, gregforutah.com. That's the number four, gregforutah.com. Take a peek. We've got some fun things on there. And thank you again for participating. And all these people that I know, to put their hat in the ring. They've got to have thick skin up here, and mine's pretty thick. Thank you for your time. Thanks for having me.
Greg, Vardell. Thank you, Josh, for the candidates, Greg, Vardell, Natalie, Michelle. Thank you so much. We will now take a 30-minute recess. You can go out and meet the candidates, including the mayor candidates out in the aisles. And we will have the mayor debate coming up in about 30 minutes.